Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oil and Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We are, we're also happy that Colin is here to join us. Hey Colin.
How you doing everyone?
So today we are talking about how you can educate your customers in five minutes a day. This is probably not the amount of time that you typically spend educating your customers unless you are, you know, in the list of us who maybe feel like we don't spend enough time taking care of customer education. So today I'm going to show you how you can do this effectively in five minutes a day in a way that might even be fun for you. Something that can get your creative juices flowing, or at the very least, if you are interested in organizing yourself more effectively, you're going to walk away with some really great tips and ideas to help you get it done. So we're going to pop out of video, go ahead and head into the chat, let us know where you're coming in from, what you are excited to do with this knowledge here today. And I am going to get into these slides that I've prepared for you. All right, so welcome again, really excited to have you here today and just a quick heads up. I am going to be asking for your participation here in just a few minutes. So get those keyboard typing fingers ready, we're going to be talking about product today. And I'm going to be interested in hearing about some of your product experiences. And I know that's something that we all love to talk about, we wish we had more opportunities to talk about how much these products have done for us. And you're going to get an opportunity to do that here on the call today. But first, let's get into this, we're going to talk about how we can go about educating our customers using something that I'm going to call a customer resource library. And how we're actually going to get this done in five minutes a day. All right, so today we're going to talk about what it looks like to create a customer education system that works for you. Not something that takes up a ton of time that you have to spend a bunch of money or hours on, but something that you really can show up for and interact with in a way that's sustainable and maybe even fun for you. We're going to talk about how this can be done quickly and even without expertise or experience in terms of tech or creative work, right? You don't need to be a designer, you don't need to know how to code things. You don't even need to be an expert in organization because we have all of the systems worked out for you. And I'll walk through them here for you today, we're going to talk about what it looks like to quickly capture information and organize it so that we can put it where it needs to go to serve your team long term. We'll talk about what it looks like to build out and grow your resource library over time. And this is again, very easy to do if you're following the system here. And then of course, as always, we'll get into some live help and Q and A. So if you are here looking for help, for support, this is an opportunity to get it. You've got myself, you've got Colin, you've got Greg here. We are here to help you even if your questions don't pertain to today's topic. So please take advantage of this opportunity to work with us live and to get your questions out of the way. Feel free to join us on a future call, if you're watching this as a replay. We are live every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time, usually unless there's convention. So definitely come and join us here, these are free for anyone who is a brand partner and a resource for you as a Get Oil and Community member. This is also a fantastic opportunity to maybe plug in, learn a little bit more if you're just getting started and maybe you aren't using Get Oil yet. Now, if you'd like to work together, this is a space for that, like I just mentioned, and you could even claim space on one of these live calls. So every week we spend an hour together live, about half of that time is spent teaching a topic. And the second half really is just open season for Q and A. And if you would like to grab some of that time for yourself, where we can spend 10 or even 15 minutes together, working on whatever it is that you need to work on or work through, we've got you covered. Get oiling.com/website review is your opportunity to join a live call and have us look at what you're doing and maybe get our hands into it together. Now, if you would like a hand getting things done, head over to get oiling.com/concierge. We do have an incredible qualified team prepared to help you no matter what your project may be. Now let's get to the root of the problem here. I'm actually really curious how much time you guys spend educating your customers and what that looks like for you. We're going to get into a little bit more of a discussion about that, but let's call out the elephant in the room first. There's a couple of facts that are universally true about having a young living business. And here's one, if you want to have a consistent check over a long period of time, you need educated empowered customers, right? But at the same time, if you want to grow your business, you gotta focus on finding new customers because education is not an income producing activity. And this kind of sends us into a little bit of a spiral because both of these are true. The problem with needing educated customers is that yes, you do need them to be educated, but also it could take up too much of your time, right? If you spend all of your time trying to get your customers educated, you aren't bringing in new people, right? We need to strike a balance, right? So another thing that happens here, let's go ahead and dig into this a little further. If we don't know how to handle this, it's really easy to get in our own way. If any of these sound like you, understand you're not alone, right? So look, Young Living has tons of products, we know this, and near infinite use cases, right? How one person uses oils could be very different from the next person. Obviously there are universal uses, but depending on what someone's goal is, what stage they are in life, what sensitivities they might have, et cetera, there's lots of different ways someone might use product. And so this can feel very overwhelming, right? And we also, and this is really more of a mindset shift that we need to really work on for ourselves. We assume that we need to know it all in order for us to be effective at sharing or at leading, right? That we need to be an oily expert, an oily professor, if you will, in order for us to be able to adequately educate our people. So a couple of things happened, or one of these three things generally happen. We'll either drop the ball and just go to sleep on educating our customers, not really showing up and educating them at all, which that does happen from time to time, right? Or perhaps we see that there are specials this month that we want to make sure people know how to use. So just because we know that there is a gift with purchase or some type of sale or promotion, we suddenly decide, we decide that everybody needs to know these things so that they might buy this stuff that's on sale or being promoted, right? So maybe not giving people what they need, giving people what we want, right? So we might do that, or we get so in the weeds on this because we care so much about knowing these things and understanding these things. We spend so much time on educating ourselves and providing education for our people that we forget that we actually have a business to grow. Does any of these sound familiar to you? So I want you to think for a moment about the last time you really intentionally worked on educating your customers. How much time did you spend? And at the end of the day, after that time was spent, what did it ultimately do for you? Did it help or did it, did things just stay the same, right? Did it give you a measurable result? If so, you're onto something, right? But, but if you spent a lot of time and you didn't get anything for it, was that a fair exchange for you? If you spent a little time and you got a little out of it, well then you know what you're going to get, right? You're going to get somebody who's a customer maybe for a while, but they don't know enough to know the value of what they have to stick around. So there's a number of these different sort of headaches that we get around education, knowing that we need it, not quite figuring out how to successfully deliver it. Now, the first key in making sure that we can do this in a sustainable way is to understand that we are not essential oil educators. We are not wellness educators. Now, if this is true for you and some other aspect of what you do that's not a Young Living brand partner, then that's fine, but it doesn't bleed over here. As a Young Living brand partner, we are not educators, we are facilitators. And if we absorb that for a moment, we can take a deep breath and, and just really release a lot of that stress, right? Because what facilitation is, is very different. Facilitation is not carrying the knowledge. It's sharing, it's pointing, right? It's being a vessel. So being a know it all, really importantly, in your business as a brand partner, it is not only not duplicable, it is not sustainable for you, right? Because if you know everything and everybody therefore needs to now come to you to get their questions answered, you have dependency in your organization, you have people who will not order unless they have spoken to you. And that's not what we want, right? We want people to eventually feel so empowered and informed that they could go and make their own choices, right? We do have to be there in the beginning to help someone build that confidence, but it's not what we do long term. And then very importantly as well, if we want to think about duplicating our successes, getting people excited about sharing so that they might become brand partners too and build a business with you. If they see you being a know it all, they believe they need to be a know it all, and what are they going to do? They're going to spend all of their time, their time researching and learning and consuming information and not being out there sharing and growing the business, right? So we don't duplicate this way and we don't sustain what we even created this way, right? So a facilitator is a guide through a process of discovery. We are not the holders of information. We are people who have walked the path before you and can show you the routes that you can choose to take. We do not prescribe the routes, we do not, we do not define those paths that they might take. We show them where they are and allow them to select for themselves, right? It's a process of self-discovery ultimately that we're guiding them through, right? So your customers are on a better journey, or sorry, on a journey to better understand themselves and support themselves, right? If they have a goal, they're on a journey to achieve that, you're not going to achieve it for them. You're not going to convince them to achieve it for themselves, but if they are ready, you can show them the path that might lead them there. And, and show up for them where they need support in their decision-making process in the beginning, right? They're on a journey to better understand themselves and to support themselves on their own journey. So what we need to do is to create an environment for discovery, not dependence, right? To create a space where people can feel inspired and empowered, right? For them to be able to make their own choices and to move forward with their relationship with Young Living, excited to try new things because of the trust that you've helped them to realize with Young Living and its products, right? So our goal with our customers is not to shove their brains full of information or to feed them information when we feel like they need it because it serves our goals of getting them, you know, to purchase from the sale or help you reach your, your numbers goals, right? Our goal is to help them become confident enough to be on their journey themselves and to eventually have that kind of confidence that inspires them to do what you're doing, which is to help others begin their own journey toward wellness, right? We're facilitators, we are not teachers. So what does this look like? What's the difference? What does facilitation look like for you as a brand partner in the scope of the work that we do? Well, this begins with how we know our customers, who we know our customers to be. And this actually starts before they're a customer, because what we need to be doing is actually showing up and having meaningful conversations so that we can understand what that person really wants when they're saying yes to Young Living. If we understand what they want, then we can work with them toward their goal, help keep them accountable on the steps they need to take toward realizing that goal. As we are connecting with them, I recommend weekly accountability with new customers in particular, or if you're maybe restarting a customer on a new journey and they maybe don't have a hero product yet, they aren't someone who is fully independent as a customer who orders every month and maxes out essential rewards and so on, right? So what we're going to do here is show up fully for our people, and this is one-on-one, right? And we're going to do this for a period of time with our new customers. We're going to show up with them, we're going to be present with them, we're going to help them find the wins that they're experiencing by using product. You're the one that's going to help them, right? So think about it this way, as a facilitator, as a guide on their journey, you are walking beside them up to a point, right? And walking beside them ultimately means you're keeping notes in your Good Oil and Contact Manager and you are checking in with them weekly to make sure that they're doing the things that they said they were going to do for themselves, which can include taking product, but maybe also doing other things that are, you know, other behaviors that are complementary to the product used to reach their goal, right? So you're going to be walking alongside them for a period. And look, where there are questions, where they start coming up with curiosities, don't be the source material, point to it, right? This is where if someone says, you know, what would be the best option for me if I'm dealing with stress? Then you could say, well, I do know what's worked for me, but here's what Young Living says about it, here's a blog post they created. Here is a video that you could go watch, right? You're not going to stand there and give the lecture, you're going to say, here's the path. And here's where you can go to find the answers that you're looking for. Because if we can get them empowered toward discovering those answers themselves, they will be empowered to go and find more answers and to have that finding of answers be something that happens through the VO, right? That happens through them placing more orders, trying more products and coming up with more incredible success stories with using Young Living products, right? So the best opportunity that you have to point and to facilitate in an organized fashion is to take what you have and what you know and to organize it into a format that your customers can interact with on an independent basis so that you don't have to tell them where to go, you can say, go login and look for it, right? So what that ultimately looks like in Get Oil, this awesome opportunity you have is to create a customer resource library using something called a vault in Get Oil. And a vault is essentially a private space, password protected member area. So you've got a private space in your member area where people could come and learn whatever you want to share in that space. And this might sound daunting to you, and if it is, take a deep breath because I'm going to show you how you can make this crazy easy and I'll actually show you how to get started here today. So the first step is to capture what you learn in real time, right? Your own wellness journey is an absolute goldmine of content. And every time you try a product or notice a result or learn something new, I want you to capture it and put it in an organized place. Now, I'm talking about a Trello board here. If you are not familiar with Trello, we have done a range of different trainings on using a Trello board for capturing information like we'll talk about here today. I'll show you where you can go to get your own that we've created for you and I'll walk you through how to use it here today. But basically what we're going to do is we're going to start intentionally looking for moments in our day where there is something that you just did or that you just learned or that you just interacted with that could be useful to someone on the same journey, right? Or someone who is maybe a part of your Young Living organization, right? So every time you, that light bulb goes off, I just want you to capture that and we're going to put it into our Trello board. And listen, this is not about writing full blog posts or even making videos. This is just about capturing thoughts, capturing facts, maybe it's a link, you saw something on social, an image, what have you. We're capturing, swiping from our regular activities and just popping things into a place where we can access them later, okay? So what this looks like to capture new information, we're going to think about what we used today and how it worked for us. Maybe something what we, that we learned today and how that might be useful. We could also grab, again, if someone shared with us a link to a study, to some kind of helpful article. That is something that you would grab and save as well. And if your customers are asking questions, if those are questions that you believe will come up again or you have seen them come up repeatedly, put those in there as well, put the question and the answer in there together. Now remember, at this stage, we are only capturing information that we will then use later, right? The next step is to organize what we've captured so that you can use it and put it into the library. So what this looks like, and I'm going to actually show you here in just a second. We're going to organize our content in Trello, so we're going to use the same Trello board that I want you to be using to plan your content, your social media posts, your website updates, your blog posts, videos, podcasts, whatever it is that you're doing for content. You're going to use the same Trello board for this because all this is, is a swipe file. It's a place to capture ideas that you can then organize into implementation later, right? We'll use labels that are available in Trello to maybe separate different types of content. You'll have public content, so those are going to be things like your blog posts, your social media content, your marketing materials, things that people who are not in the know, right? You're not customers, your leads will be seeing. And then we've got internal content, right? This is our customer focused stuff, right? We're not going to go out and share a study on, you know, how Ningxia helps with A B or C on our blog, generally speaking. Because if people really wanted to know about Ningxia, they would probably wind up going to Young Living and learning about it directly, right? People are going to learn about Ningxia from you through your connections with them. So that would be like internal content. So if you've got some great stuff that you have found that you would like to share with customers in the future, we're going to tag that as internal content on our Trello board and then we will use that in later steps. Now, if you don't have a Trello board yet, we do have a blog post on the Get Oil blog that is the first in our series of content planning. And if you go to this blog post, you'll actually find that there is a checklist that has a Trello board on it, right? So let me actually just pop over really quickly and show you exactly what that will look like if you go to that link. And I will include this link in the, in the description and of course, on the blog post for this training. So here's the swipe file system, how to plan better content without starting from scratch. You scroll down here, you can actually see the replay and we've got this planning checklist here. When you click here, it's actually going to give you a link to open up your very own Trello template. So I've created a template for you, you will need to be logged into Trello, this is free. Trello.com, go ahead and grab yourself a free account and you can use this free resource. And when you get it, you will see that it will look similar to this, although this is a more expanded version that you can actually see I've used for a number of different purposes. So the Trello board is really just a place for you to, to gather ideas and to put them into organization so that you can work with them in the future, right? So here you can see I've got my drafts that are in progress, I've got scheduled and published. These are going to be for like blog posts and things like this. But here's where I capture ideas for emails that I want to send, where I capture ideas for social media posts that I want to make, for long form content such as blog posts, YouTube videos, podcasts, et cetera, I capture those ideas here. I capture ideas for things that I want to do with my website here. Maybe I capture FAQs here, testimonials here. I'm going to go ahead and add another list here and this is going to be customer education, right? Where maybe I'm talking about very specifically Young Living stuff, right? This is stuff that's going to live inside of a vault. And so here I can create a card. I'm going to, let's see, today I am, I am diffuse genius while doing creative work, right? So here's a tip that I want to share, I want to talk about diffusing genius while you're doing creative work. That's something I'm doing today. I'm going to go check out my labels here and see if I have any that apply to this, let me show more. And none of these applies, so I'm going to create a new one. This one is going to be this deep purple and this is going to be customer education topics, right? And so here is where I would maybe put a link to Genius, right? If I wanted to send them to the Young Living website where they can purchase Genius. Here I could also maybe talk about the constituent parts of it, I could grab links to go to different places. Did Young Living blog about it? Could I put a link to that there? This is not something that I need to do anything with yet, this is just where I'm capturing the idea. Here's an idea, diffuse genius while you're doing creative work. If I have another idea, I can pop that in here as well. Now, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves here, but I just wanted to show you that it's just a really quick and easy thing to interact with, right? So to categorize your customer focused content, we do first want to make sure that we're being clear that this particular card that we're creating, this piece of content that we're capturing is something that is for customers, right? But then from there, we can think about more ways to organize this. So maybe there are everyday wellness experiences or essential oil uses and applications, supplements and daily support, toxin-free living and diffuser recipes. These are just some ideas, right? So instead of just having a catch-all, like you just saw, this is just customer education content. Maybe I am going to deliberately start building out and capturing ideas for diffuser recipes, for wellness experiences and essential oil uses and applications. Maybe if you are someone who is working with a more of a particular audience, it's your, your passion to maybe work with people at a certain season of life, then you might tweak these a bit to your needs. So here again, if I go back to our Trello board and I want to maybe apply an additional category here, this is going to be maybe one for productivity, right? So if I go to labels here, I know I don't have a label here for this, I'm just going to create a new one and I'm going to call this productivity. And now anything that I create, that I capture an idea for, I can label with productivity, right? So here's self-care for moms who don't have time, this has, let's see, this needs a self-care tag. But maybe I'm talking about productivity here as well, so I can go, oh, I actually had it in here already. I can go ahead and select that, right? So it's really on all of your content, you could be adding those tags. But very specifically where we're capturing ideas for things that we want to share with our customers, we can add those additional filters there and you can go here and filter for very specifically customer education topics and find only the cards on the board that pertain to that particular topic, which is just really, really useful as something like this starts to get full of the ideas that you're capturing, all right? So speaking of that, where do we go from here? Once you have captured the ideas, we need to turn that into a living customer resource, right? So once a month, we're going to update an online class inside of Get Oil with what you've captured in Trello. And this is going to allow you to build valuable education resources without needing to start from scratch. And over time, this becomes a powerful tool for customer retention and engagement. Essentially, we're creating a private members only space for your people to go and find interesting information that you've curated for them, right? So let's talk about how we can get this done efficiently and then I'm going to walk you through exactly how to do it. And again, I'm going to be asking you in just a minute to, to give me some feedback here, so be ready for that. All right, so first, we want to use Trello as our daily capture system. And all you need to do is spend five minutes a day creating a card, just like I showed you. We're going to put a little bit more information in it as we have time and, you know, and that's really it, just five minutes a day. What did I use today? Is there something that I learned new today, et cetera? And let's create a card for each. And then at the end of the month, review what's most valuable and add any key insights from there to your Get Oil online class inside of the vault that you create for your customers. And instead of feeling like you just need to create content, this approach is going to let you refine what you already have and really take advantage of what's in front of you, right? So you don't need to go and build out some massive resource. This can be something that grows and builds over time, right? So this is going to work for you if you can stay consistent, let's talk about how we can be consistent. It's not about doing something magical and enormous overnight or over the next few months. It's, it's just about small, consistent progress on a regular basis. And as this vault grows, it will grow like your wellness journey, right? It's one step at a time, we are not stepping out perfect. And if we did, what use would we be as guides on a journey if we knew everything? Why would we concern ourselves with any of this, right? If, if, if our, if where we are right now is absolutely perfect, we are still on a journey. No matter how far ahead you may be of someone that you helped get started, we are still on a journey of improvement, of refining, right? And so allow this to be something that grows with you and something that your people can continue to access as well. And listen, when you normalize capturing your knowledge on a daily basis, you are never going to be starting from zero when it's time for you to go and put something together, right? So here's what I want you to do next, we're going to start logging small insights in Trello, that's five minutes a day is enough. And at the end of the month, we're going to transfer those takeaways into your, your online class and Get Oil. And then just know that this is something that is okay to not have like fully built out, right? This is something that your team can be a part of, they can be invested in. You can invite them to share what they're seeing, what they know, and you can capture those things in Trello and then add them back into your member area in a very organized way in that online class, all right? So let's see this in action, this requires your participation. I want you to drop me a comment in the chat as many times as you like, as these answers pertain to you. All right, so first question, what is a product you use today and why? And what is the result of using that product? Another option, share a recent Q and A from your community, what's a question a customer asked? And what's an answer that you gave to it, to that question? Name a go-to solution to a common problem solved by a product. Did you learn something new today about a product or ingredient? And what problems or goals do customers share with you most often? I'm going to leave this up here for just a moment, so take a look at these and provide me with a comment, all right? So I'm seeing some super B for energy, clarity for focus, dragon time, yes. Release in cedarwood at night in the diffuser, placing a second loyalty order in a month. See Rhonda, I'm going to need some follow-ups on these. Tell me more about this, right? So valor on feet, grounding to start the day, I love it. You know, something, a go-to solution to a common problem solved by a product, most people, well, we Most people, uh, well, we all here probably know this, but, uh, most people probably don't know that if you purchase something and it, you take a sticker off of it and there's gunky stuff that's stuck on your glass bottle or your container or what have you on a window. Take some lemon oil, put it right on the gunky stuff and it will slide right off, right? If you want to remove a label from something, lemon oil, who knew, right? There's a cool thing. Peppermint for hiccups. Ooh, I didn't know this. DiGi is while traveling. I can't live without that one. I agree. Highest potential in present time, keeps me grounded all day, smells amazing. Okay. All right. So keep that going, right? Keep it going. Product you use today and why, what is the result? Recent Q and A, someone asked this question, you gave this answer. A go-to solution to a common problem, something you may have learned that's new today about a product or an ingredient. So think about, for instance, I've got sleek essence sitting here on my, uh, on my desk. I know spearmint is part of this. Maybe I get curious and I want to find out why is spearmint in this blend? What does it do? Right? So think about that. If you get curious about those things, if you're someone, if you're like me and you, you want to go learn all of it. If you are currently someone who consumes wellness information in service of understanding your journey, your body and the products you use better, you have massive opportunities here to not just consume information for the sake of knowing, but to consume information so that you can turn around and turn it into a productive tool for yourself. Let's go take a look at exactly what that looks like and then get into some life help and Q and A. All right. First things first, let me, let me come up here. I'm going to actually ask some follow-up questions for, for some of you guys. This is great. Gina, I see, um, animal scents ointment for diaper rash. Tell me more, right? Uh, so here, I'll just give you an example, right? So I'm saying I'm diffusing genius while doing creative work, right? So this is where I might just share a little bit of a story. Uh, I'm easily distracted, right? So I'm easily distracted and have a hard time focusing on tasks that I have some kind of resistance to. I don't love writing, which means I don't love blogging and therefore procrastinate about getting that work done. When I learned I could diffuse, uh, genius while working, I was very curious, right? And then what's my story? I, um, I loaded up the diffuser, sat down and timed myself for 45 minutes and got three times more done in that session than I ever did before, right? Right? So there's my story. Uh, I am actually going to in another window here, I'm going to go pull up some information about genius. I'm going to go type, uh, genius into Google. I'm going to go find, here's the page here. And actually have the other genius, um, the not kids sense one, uh, but I think that that is not someone that you, something that you can just buy. Uh, so anyway, you can actually see here, um, that there are a number of features that it talks about. So grounding frankincense and calming cedarwood. So I'm not an expert, but I'm going to say that this blend, all right, so I'm going to say that this blend contains, uh, cedarwood and what did Young Living say? And frankincense, uh, which are grounding. All right, let me go back over here. Grounding to keep the mind settled and focused. Learn more here. And I'm just going to go grab that link from my market. I'm going to pop it right there. I'm going to leave that as just a link. I'm going to delete this Google stuff here. There we go. So I'm going to click save and I'm good. That's all I needed to do, right? I, I, what did I do? I did this thing, right? I created a card. I labeled it. I shared a little bit of a story and I put a link to the product. Now I'm just going to keep it here. I'm not going to go put this onto the website yet, right? This is something I'll do after I have a few of these and I can go do a few at the same time, right? Uh, so, uh, Donna K, allergy bomb. Tell me more about allergy bomb because I don't know what that is. All right. I'm also going to put, uh, DiGi's, uh, when traveling, right? And then I can just go ahead again and just capture this. Maybe I don't have time right now, right? Here's customer education topics. Maybe I've got one, if I talk about gut health a lot, maybe I've got a gut health label, et cetera, right? And, and I, I, if I don't have time right now to put the information in, this is just enough for me to work with. I know I can come back to this later, right? Uh, okay. Donna K says equal parts lemon, lavender, peppermint, copa. Okay. Love it. Allergy bomb. I've, there's another bomb that I learned about a few years ago. So, uh, allergy bomb recipe. Okay. And so this again, I'm going to keep it real simple. Yes, that's the one Rhonda, I learned about that one a while back. All right. So lemon, lavender, peppermint, copa. Equal parts in, uh, gel capsule. Again, I am just going to save this as is right now. I can go and, um, I can come back and address this later. I just captured an idea. This is something you can do very, very quickly. Trello has an app you can have on your phone, right? Oh, I love that. Oh, so in this case, you're actually diluting it and putting in a roller bottle. Yeah. For the morphine bomb, you, you, you actually put it in a capsule. So, uh, dilute, uh, use in roller. Love it. And that also would probably be lovely in a, um, in a diffuser as well. It kind of reminds me of seasoned essentials. Awesome, awesome. So, um, let me go back and see if there's another one here that I can grab. If anyone has the recipe for the morphine bomb, uh, could you pop it into the chat here? Cause I actually don't remember it. I just know that it has, um, like evergreens. It, it has, uh, it has tree oils in it very specifically, because those are fantastic for inflammation. All right. Yeah. Definitely check out the chat for that. And if you guys are watching this as a replay, uh, know that you are missing out. All right, um, Rhonda, tell me more about, um, placing a second loyalty order in a month. Because that is, uh, that's, that's a kind of a different type of tip. Uh, because I, I want to kind of demonstrate here real quickly that you can do this for brand partners as well, right? So, uh, uh, or, or if, if this is something that would be, uh, you know, applicable to someone in that, in that space. Anyway, uh, morphine bomb, here we go. Equal drops frankincense, copa, but balsam fir. Beautiful. Here, I'm just going to pop this in here real quick as well. Excellent. Here again. Recipe, save. See, someone just put that into the chat. You guys grab this, put it in, right? Save these things that you're learning right now as you're learning them. You don't need to do anything with them yet, but when you are ready to do something with them, we can go and see that we've got this list of stuff, right? And we can go and put them into their appropriate place in your Get Oiling account. Now here's what I would recommend that you do first. Capture the ideas and then if in the moment, so let's just say for instance, uh, I'm, I'm going to actually just go and, uh, find some inspiration. Uh, I'm going to find the allergy bomb, Young Living. This is something that somebody has posted. Beautiful. I'm going to go look at images here. Uh, let me switch my share so you guys can see what I'm doing. I Googled it to see if anybody has said anything about it, if anybody's created any, um, images that I would maybe be interested in using as a, um, as inspiration, right? Cause remember when we're doing this, we aren't, um, uh, we, we aren't actually going to, uh, reuse somebody else's material. Where this is our way, I'm going to save this to downloads. Uh, this is our way of capturing inspiration so that we can do something else with it, right? So I'm actually going to come back over here. Here's allergy bomb. Uh, I'm going to go find in my downloads that image that I just saved and I'm going to drag it right over here. And there it is. So I can go into Canva and use this as sort of an inspiration for me. Obviously these are old images of product anyway. And somebody else, uh, yeah, somebody else's logo. So we don't want to use that. Uh, but on all of these, where you're talking about a particular product, uh, you can link to that product. So go over to Young Living, link the product, put it in here, right? Uh, if it's a recipe, right? So this allergy bomb recipe, we're going to want to go grab links for la- lemon, lavender, peppermint, copa, right? Um, recommendations on roller bottles, et cetera. As, as full as you want to make this information, you can do that. And then what we're going to do is we're going to go over to, uh, to Get Oiling. And obviously assuming that you already have a, uh, a member area that you have set up. I hope you do. If not, I will walk you through that as sort of a last step here. But we're going to go create a class first, because you don't even have to have a, um, a member area to get started with this. You can just start building a class that you will eventually put into, uh, a vault, right? So I'm going to go click add and I'm going to just create a new empty class. And this class is going to be, um, uh, these are going to be, uh, wellness resources. That's what I'm going to name it. And I'm going to create it. And then I can start adding content. The first one is going to be a lesson and that lesson is going to be, uh, using my, uh, I'm going to go back over and grab my Trello board here. The first lesson is going to be about genius, right? Diffuse genius while doing creative work. Now, real quick, I am going to, um, I'm actually going to go and grab the image that Young Living has for genius and go ahead and just drop it in here. So that's what I just did. Uh, and so I am going to actually use all of this information to go build out, uh, that lesson in the vault. So I'm going to copy what I put right here. And then I'm going to just go right back over to, uh, my browser. Name that lesson, diffuse genius while doing creative work. I am going to then, again, I'm, I'm just copying from my description here in Trello. And I'm going to paste this right here in the lesson content. And here, I'm going to insert the image which I have, uh, on my board here. All right. Actually I don't have that saved. I'm going to put that on my device. Save to downloads. And there it is. Upload that there. Perfect. Now one last step that you could take here, if for whatever reason you are, uh, maybe creating something, a resource like this that, uh, might have people in it who are not customers, you can use the leaf link here. Again, just copy this link and, uh, click over here to more miscellaneous. Click the leaf link, paste your link in. And you can see that it has your sponsor and enroller information included. So we can actually just go in and make that cute here. I'm going to edit that, change the text to here. And there we go. All right. So this was really easy to do, really super easy to do, right? Uh, I can go ahead and add another one if I've got time. I'm going to add another lesson. Again, pulling from my Trello board, I am going to go find, uh, the allergy bomb. Uh, and obviously I would probably want to have a little bit more information on this, but here's my allergy, uh, bomb recipe. And then I can go again, back over to my Trello board. I can copy what I have put there. I can paste it here. I should have links already before I come over here, just to save myself time. Of course you want to fill this out just a little bit more, but you see how you can just take what you put in your Trello board in just a few minutes and then just start adding it to that, uh, that class in the vault. Now this is a class currently that is not inside of a vault. If you do not have a vault yet for your customers, uh, that is a really simple thing that you can do as well. Go over to vaults here, click add. And here we are going to maybe call this, uh, the, um, the well-rounded wellness community. I don't know, maybe that's the name of your group. You can give it a name. Uh, I am going to go ahead and add that class to it after I create it. Go ahead and create, hit create or save. And then I can go and find that existing class. There's my wellness resources, add the class and save it. All right. Now with this saved, uh, we have a starting point, right? Maybe I just want to take it one step further and add a discussion room, right? So this is wellness, uh, wellness journey discussion. I can add some guidelines here and then I can create it. And then again, I have the ability to invite to this or on any contacts in the vault. This will actually show you exactly how you can invite your customers to come and join this when you're ready. And then all you have to do, if you have more things that you want to add to your resources, do this as often as you like. Uh, don't make it your full-time job, but go over to your Trello board where you've captured an idea. Click add content and then simply just add another, right? So I'm going to go grab that, uh, morphine bomb recipe and come back over here, title my lesson and then put in my content from what I've put on the board. Now again, I would recommend that you put just a little bit more work into the board before pasting like this. This isn't optimal. But just to show you how easy it is to add these things and to modify them, to make them nicer. It's always going to be a work in progress, just as we are always a work in progress and our wellness journey is a work in progress. So allow your progress to be something that guides how you show up, how you create content, how you connect with your people. And it's going to give them more of an incentive to be invested in that journey for themselves, right? Cause they're going to see that they don't have to have everything figured out. They don't have to articulate everything perfectly. They don't need to know everything or even where to find everything. They can be inspired because you're more like them, right? They're on a journey as well. They can see that you are, and then you are sharing what works for you as you go. So, uh, guys, if you have any questions or you want to talk through any of this today, I see there is a ton of, uh, of, of chat happening here about these, uh, specific products. I hope that you are copying and pasting, uh, the chat, uh, pieces that you're seeing here. The, the recipes, the use cases that are of interest to you, so that you can put those into your own Trello board, right? Uh, these are things that you don't have to act on right away, right? One of the things that I think gets us the most stuck in this business is that we, uh, we get stuck in a cycle of reactivity, right? Where we assume that we, uh, when we see something that needs doing, we need to do it right now, right? And while it is ideal for our customers, perhaps to be a little bit more educated than they may be, it doesn't mean that you need to drop everything or spend all of your time trying to educate so that you stop inviting, right? So there are lines that we need to draw for ourselves, boundaries that we need to create that are healthy, that are productive. Uh, and, and of course the space that we create with the organization that we introduce is what allows us to really flow and show up in the ways that we need to, right? So if we can say, you know what? It seems like a lot of work for me to release a blog post a week and to have a member area for my people. Understand that you, you're blogging if you have released one blog post and maybe you have another that you're planning to publish in the future. You are educating your people if you have created a couple of these lessons, right? And you are just intentionally building on and creating more. You can be correct exactly where you are and you have enough and are enough exactly where you are to be able to meet people where they are. Now really quickly, I do want to show you guys one thing. It's not specifically related, uh, to today's topic, but it is a really important thing that I, uh, I want to make sure that you know and have absorbed, uh, because what we're talking about here today is creating infrastructure, right? This is a little bit advanced. If you're just getting started with helping people get started with Young Living, right? If you are just in the beginning of growing a brand partner business, it's really important that you know how to prioritize the time that you spend, right? And where to put your efforts so that they are most fruitful for you and, and what it looks like to actually create duplicable success in this business. And where I want to take you really quickly. And where I want to take you really quickly is right over here to the success academy. And actually I have this in the blog as well. Matter of fact, let me just show you in the blog. I'm pretty sure this is here. I've got our content planning systems. Do I have? Maybe I don't have those there yet. Just kidding. I, I, I'll double check and let you guys know for sure. So the success academy is right here. Under start here, under live training and replays. Head over here to view by topic. I don't think that I've put the brand partner pipeline onto our blog yet, because we did this just a while back. Um, but if you go over here to view full, full playlist. If you're just getting started as a brand partner. And you want to make sure your people are educated, but more importantly, you want to make sure you have customers in the first place. Make sure you start here. All right. These are hour-long videos. The training in them is thirty minutes or less in all cases. Uh, so make sure that again, if you're watching this and uh, maybe you're saying to yourself, well, I do want to educate my people, but I only have two of them and I'd like to have more. I do want to make sure that you know where to go to make sure that you are um, actually getting the actions in. That are going to get you those customers that need to be educated in the first place. All right. Let me see. You guys are so incredible. All of this communication happening here in the chat. Um. I don't know how appropriate or compliant it would be for me to publish the contents of this chat, so I won't. Uh, but uh, but you guys do take a moment and scroll through here. And you know, screenshot or copy, uh, paste whatever you have learned that you would like to retain. I just don't want to put it up in a public space where um, anyone could uh, could get into any trouble for sharing uh. Personal perspectives. No, definitely not a public share. And that is also kind of the beauty of, of capturing and collecting this information. Now I am not sitting here today and we on behalf of Get Oilin are not sitting here today and encouraging anyone to act out of compliance. Uh, but there are compliant ways to behave and those are. Kitchen table conversations. Kitchen table conversations are things that are not in the public domain, right? Not in the public space. It's not published, right? It's not broadcasted from a podium, uh, and uh. And it's something that is only accessible to the people that it, that, you know, it's a need to know thing, right? We have private member area. That you can have on your own website where you can share whatever you want. All right. So uh, would you quickly show the Trello cards with labels again? How to switch computers? Yeah, sure, Allison. Just one second. Let me get over here to Trello. All right. So um. You'll find an overview of exactly what Trello is and how it works in the training that we linked, uh, that shares this uh. This board with you. So um, these are lists and on the lists are cards. And on each of these cards, we have the ability to apply labels for categories. And then of course we can um. We can go further in our organization strategies by kind of dictating what goes into each list, right? So uh, long form content is going to comprise blog posts, uh, videos, YouTube, like on YouTube. Uh, podcasts, et cetera. Social media post is pretty straightforward. It might be YouTube. It might be Instagram. It might be LinkedIn. It might be Facebook and you might want to use different colored tags for those purposes. Those are labels. All of these little things that you see here. Actually, if I go over here. Actually, if I just click one of the labels, it'll show you the name on each of them. I just find it very visually busy. Right? So you can see the tags that we have or the labels rather that we have on these things. Right? So the labels are, are really helpful. And then uh, what you're going to do is choose uh, where you want to um, focus. So today we're talking about capturing ideas for customer education. So in a lot of cases, like if you learn about a wellness topic and it's something that you think that leads would be interested in. Definitely prioritize putting that into social media, long form content, et cetera, the things that will help you to attract future leads. But if there is a very specific young living product application that you recommend where that's concerned. Uh, then go ahead and, and, and sort of double dip as it were. So what, what I would maybe use as an example here. Is it maybe today, uh, I learned that um. Maybe I, I learned that uh, that tree resins uh, are particularly uh, anti-inflammatory and pain relieving. For people who have Lyme disease. Let's just pretend that I learned uh, that information today, right? Uh, and so maybe I then have an idea with my long form content, uh, I'm going to actually use a template here. Uh, and uh, I'm going to use uh, one that talks, I'm, I'm going to maybe find a study. Maybe I read a study about uh, uh. How trees uh, can help us. When hiking in them caused us ills, right? So we went hiking, we got Lyme disease from a tick bites. Uh, but what do you know? The trees that were surrounding us are uh, are maybe part of the solution. Uh, to the, the, the problems that we're seeing, we're seeing, right? So here, I'm going to talk about it over here this way publicly, and I'm not going to talk about Young Living products here, right? Cause I'm not going to try to say Lyme disease plus, you know, these oils equals solution, right? Cause that's not compliant. Uh, but what I could also choose to do in customer education in my private member area is talk about. Anti-inflammatory uh, properties of copa. And uh, and spruce. And then maybe a study on uh, therapeutic. Applications of copa. Essential oils in Lyme patients. I'm sharing a study here. That's interesting. I read that today. Maybe you're somebody who likes reading stuff like that, like I do. If you're not, don't worry. You don't have to go this far. This is really just for my, for my health nut nerds out there. Go over here, grab labels, customer education. Right there. And I've got this stored away for when I'm ready to give it a little bit more time. Add the links that I want to add, maybe share a story. And again, these don't have to be perfect and, and absolutely complete either, because you know. Uh, that when you are in your get oiling account. And you are working on your class, you could go in. And make improvements. Maybe you just got a great uh, you know, testimonial or you read a study. About the inflammatory, anti-inflammatory effects of copa. And how that would be helpful to someone who has allergies and you want to include that here, right? So you could always go back and edit these. These are something that you could always be improving over time. Now the swipe file training, uh, I've actually added those to our um. Here, it's this one right here. Swipe file system, how to plan better content without starting from scratch. Um, what you can find if you're in the Get Oilin blog, if you just click content planning, it's going to be the very first one. Right? And these are the same, so these here are going to be the same as what you'll see. In the success academy, if you view by topic, uh, the content planning systems. So today, because we are talking about private content for our customers, right? We talked a lot about public content for our leads and content planning systems here. Uh, but today we've talked about private content planning, so that's going to show up. Uh, with that same tag and then this playlist as well. So if you prefer, you could obviously find this on YouTube. It will link to the blog post. Uh, but you'll also find it in this list if you select content planning as the tag. All right. Thank you guys so much for being so amazing here today, participating, sharing what's working for you. Uh, I love that, uh, that everyone is so uh, free with that, uh, with, uh, with being. Uh, generous to each other. We are all one team on one mission and uh, we're really honored to be a part of this journey with you. So I thank you guys for being here. Grab those convention and aroma sharing tickets. Can't wait to see you guys in just a few weeks. And uh, yeah, look forward to uh, the replay and the blog post for this later today. We'll be back here same time next week. Take care, everybody.